I'd like to call the December 9th, 2013 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First we'll have an invocation. Ms. Sethridge?
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And 'tis the season, it's right here upon us with Christmas right around the corner. I'm gonna read a chapter from "Don't Sweat the Small Stuff" by Richard Carlson. Relax. What does it mean to relax? Despite hearing this term thousands of times during the course of our lives, very few people have deeply considered what it's really about. When you ask people what it means to relax, most will answer in a way that suggests that relaxing is something you plan to do later. You do it on vacation, in a hammock, when you retire, or when you get everything done. This implies, of course, that most other times, the other ninety-five percent of your life, should be spent nervous, agitated, rushed, and frenzied. Very few actually come out and say so, but this is the obvious implication. Could this explain why so many of us operate as if life were one great big emergency? Most of us postpone relaxation until our end basket is empty. Of course, it never is. It's useful to think of relaxation as a quality of heart that you can access on a regular basis, rather than something reserved for some time later. You can relax now. It's helpful to remember that relaxed people can still be super achievers, and in fact, that relaxation and creativity go hand in hand. When I'm feeling uptight, for example, I don't even try to write, but when I feel relaxed, my writing flows quickly and easily. Being more relaxed involves training yourself to respond differently to the drama of life, turning your melodrama into mellow drama. It comes in part from reminding yourself over and over again with loving kindness and patience that you have a choice in how you respond to life. You can learn to relate to your thinking as well as your circumstances in new ways. With practice, making these choices will translate into a more relaxed self. I would just like for all of us to do that this holiday season. Just enjoy the time together with your family and loved ones. Treasure every moment, and happy holidays.
Now, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Now, Principal of Moyac Middle School, Phil Walls, will I introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Walls?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Nick Launtz, one of our eighth grade students, to come up and lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you all please rise?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The school spotlight this month is on Moyac Middle School, and once again, I'll turn it over to Principal Phil Walls.
Good evening again. Thank you all for letting Moyac show some of our many talented students this evening. We're gonna highlight on a couple of things that we've had going on here. First, before we get started, I would like to say thank you to both Ms. Deborah Gorza and Mr. Randy Wood, my two assistant principals, for all the hard work that they've done this year, and for helping make Moyac Middle School a great place. First, we're gonna have FBLA, three members of our FBLA, come up and talk. They recently competed in a competition, and they're gonna give us a little history of what they've been doing. Mr. Nick Launtz, Ms. Marley Walls, and Ms. Bethany Forehand. Come on, guys.
Hi, I'm Nick with Moyac Middle School. I'm the president of FBLA there. First, I would like to start off with saying FBLA is future business leaders of America. At FBLA, we teach business skills and business etiquette. We compete at regionals and help out in our community. We fundraise for our club, and we collect money for the March of Dimes. FBLA is a great way to get started in business for environment and to prepare yourself for life.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Bethany Forehand, and tonight I will be talking about competitions. I'm the vice president of FBLA. This past weekend, we had our club participate in the Eastern Regional Competition, and MMS came home with three first places, two second places, and three third places. A great success. And our next competition will be the State Leadership Conference competition in March. It is a three-day event. In the meantime, we will have several fundraisers to help us raise the $140 we need to attend. We also have a group doing a stock market competition against middle and high school students across the nation.
Hi, I'm Marley, and I'm the secretary of FBLA. And so far this year for community service, we have done a Thanksgiving food drive where we collected food for local families so that they could have food for Thanksgiving. And we also did a superheroes against bullying project at Moyac Elementary School with their kindergartners and first graders. And then we have done a career clothing closet where you can donate business clothes for others to use at FBLA events and functions, and we are accepting donations if any of you would like to donate any old business clothes for us to use.
Do you clean out the closet? Will you come clean out the closet? That's my problem.
Thank you, guys.
Nick, Bethany, Marley, thank you very much.
All right, we have at Moyac Middle School, coming up this Thursday, our Christmas, or holiday I should say, not Christmas, sorry about that, don't wanna offend anybody, concert. And then we're gonna give you a little sampling tonight of some very talented young ladies, and we encourage you all to come and join us on Thursday night, because it's gonna be an outstanding show. Make sure I don't forget anybody here. Paige Saunders, come on Paige, stand up. Bethany Forehand, Mackenzie Heaton, Brianna Carroll, Hannah Donald, Jenna Duncan, Laura Flowers, and Rebecca Marler. And they're under the direction of Mr. Kyle Cook.
Hello, everyone. So, tonight, we are going to be singing just, this would normally be a song between our seventh and eighth grade girls, but if you did not want eighty girls in here, middle school age girls, I didn't think that would be appropriate, and nobody wants all that surrounding them, so we opted with just eight. We are going to be singing, we're going to be singing the holiday tune "Santa Baby." It is done with just girls, although some of the boys have argued. Sorry, boys, next year. So, I hope you enjoy. Feel free. It's all right to clap along, sing along if you want to, if it's appropriate.
(Singing) Mister Claus, I feel as though I know ya. So you won't mind if I should get familiar, will ya? Santa baby, just slip a label under the tree for me. Been an awful good girl, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa baby, a fifty-four convertible too, light blue. I'll wait up for you, dear Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Think of all the fun I missed, think of all the fellas that I had and kids. Next year I could be just as good if you check off my Christmas list. Santa baby, I'm wanting ya, it really does not a lot. Been an angel all year, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa baby, one little thing I really do need, the deed. Two platinum mines, Santa honey, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa cutie, and fill my stocking with a duplex and checks. Sign your X on the line, Santa cutie, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Come and trim my Christmas tree with some decorations bought at Tiffany's. I really do believe in you, let's see if you believe in me. Santa baby, forgot to mention one little thing, a ring. I don't need on the phone, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. So, Santa, shut me down the chimney tonight. Santa baby, hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa honey, hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa cutie, hurry down the chimney tonight.
Hey, Kyle. Come on back up, Kyle. You wanna tell everybody once again when the concert is?
Yeah, the concert is Thursday night in the gymnasium at Moyac. It is free. We are asking for a donation at the door, just to cover any funds that we may incur in the next years. We need a piano! But, it is at 6:30. I would suggest that you get there early, because I know my first concert at Moyac was a couple months ago, and Mr. Walls, he had told me on my tour, you're going to have a lot of people there. Well, I had three hundred and seventy-five programs printed, and they were all gone. So, it packed the house, so you will want to get there early. I hope to see all of you there. It's a musical evening of holiday favorites. We have a sing-along. There may even be a special guest from North Pole! So, I hope to see you all there. Thank you, guys, for having us, though.
Do you have something else to say?
That's it, thank you.
I'll tell you why. You were right when you said talented. FBLA and choir, it's like, they really did a good job. Girls, you did a great job.
Yes.
And I just wanna say one thing. I wish everybody could've seen Kyle from RN, because he enjoys it just as much as the girls were. He was having a blast. Very talented.
Thank you, once again. Okay, every December, the board has to elect officers, and to do the election of the chairman, I have to turn it over to School Superintendent Allison Scholler.
Thank you, Board. Do I have a nomination for chairman of the board?
I have a nomination. I would like to nominate Bill Dobney.
Okay, do I have a second for the nomination?
Second.
In order to nominate Dr. Dobney, you will have to invoke Policy 2450, Suspension of Board Policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. You will also have to suspend Policy Number 2200, Election of Officers Organization of Board, because it states that the chair cannot serve two terms in a row. So, do I have a motion for suspending Policy 2200?
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, now, back to the nomination for chairman of the board, Dr. Dobney. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Dobney.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the board for their continued support, me being chairman. Now, we'll do the election for vice chairman. Do I have a motion for her nomination?
I nominate Mr. Simmons for vice chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a nomination for Mr. Simmons being vice chair of the board. In order for that to happen, once again, we need to go back, and we have to invoke Policy 2450, Suspension of Board Policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have to suspend Policy 2200, Election of Officers and Organization of the Board, because it states that vice chair can serve no more than two terms. Do I have a motion that we suspend Policy 2200?
So moved. Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we need to vote on Mr. Simmons being vice chair. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and once again, Mr. Simmons is vice chair.
Thank you.
Next, work session review. We, the board did have, as usual, a work session at four o'clock today, and we received information on the new state House bill, I think it was 405, that states that, you know, we have to select top twenty-five percent teachers, and then offer them a $500 bonus for giving up their tenure. So, we heard from our school attorney Neil Ramey at that time. We also heard from Mr. O'Brien on wifi on the school buses, and there is going to be a pilot because of the routing of information, and it's gonna be done at Harnett County the first two weeks in January, so we'll know more about what to do, you know, after the pilot program there at Harnett County. We did hear from Ms. Scholler about Small Schools Consortium. Then, we heard from Ms. Kinzel, the Assistant Superintendent on Digital Learning Grand Application, and that's a regional effort that she's spearheading, and it sounds like it should be very helpful for our teachers and the region. Then, we heard from Mr. O'Brien on Revision of Policy 3420, Student Promotion and Accountability. And because of the new testing standards, we had to eliminate one of the standards that said the students had to achieve at such a rate. Then, the last thing we heard was the Series 9000 Policies on Facility Planning and Construction. Now, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Aye, sir. I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, Recognition of Renewals for National Board Certified Teachers. Board of Education and Superintendent Scholler, assisted by Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent. Ms. Kinzel, do you want us up there?
Okay. This is gonna be very brief, but we did wanna continue to recognize, each year at this time, teachers who have gone through the grueling process of national board certification have submitted, and by November, around Thanksgiving, they find out whether or not they have actually met the qualifications and received their national board certification. Shortly, sometimes right before, and sometimes right after that time period, those that have been up for renewal have been notified, they've done their submissions, and they've received notification, too. This year, we have two teachers in our district that have received national board certification renewal, and in keeping with tradition, we'd like to recognize them for their efforts, because it is quite a commitment, and it certainly demonstrates their commitment to growing as professional, and, you know, as Ms. Craft can certainly testify, too, it's something that not the faint of heart take on, especially with everything else that we have going on. So, along with Ms. Scholler, we would like to recognize our two national board certified renewals, and one is Kim Jackson from Currituck County Middle School. She's a social studies teacher there. She had, she has an illness in the family and was unable to be here this evening, but we will make sure she gets a certificate acknowledging that. And our second renewal is Selena Jarvis, also a social studies teacher at Currituck County High School. And again, she apologizes for not being able to be here, but again, we wanted to make sure we recognized them publicly. So, on behalf of you, they will receive these certificates.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item, NCAE Celebration of Education Poster Contest Winners. Ms. Rose?
Good evening.
Good evening.
NCAE celebrated American Education Week, the week of November 18th through the 22nd. We had a celebration at the high school, celebrating education in Currituck. Many of you were there, and we appreciate your support. We certainly wanted to thank you for coming. We have so many things that are going on in our school system to be proud of. One thing that NCAE did that week was we held a poster contest, a PowerPoint contest, and an essay contest for grades K through five, the poster contest. And the PowerPoint contest was grade six through eight, and the essay contest was nine through twelve. At this time, we'd like to recognize the winners. Now, our poster contest winner, I have not seen her, so she was not able to be here tonight, I suppose, but it was Sydney Younger. She was there, our winner from Grex Elementary. Our PowerPoint contest winner was Sydney Gardner, and she is with us this evening. Sydney, come on up. She's from Currituck Middle School, and she did an awesome PowerPoint. And our essay contest winner was from Currituck High School, and that was Thomas Poston. Thomas did an awesome job as well. We're very proud of all the students in our school system, and we just wanted to present them to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention earlier, Mr. Simmons and I are probably the only two people in here that remember what a fifty-four blue convertible looks like. Okay, next, Holiday Card Design Winners. Superintendent Scholler and Ms. Kinzel?
Again, another annual tradition. It's a pleasure to be here before the board and announce and unveil for the first time our 2013-14 Holiday Card Winner. Each year, again, about the end of October, we send out information to our art teachers in the middle school and the high school, and ask them to seek out submissions for a holiday card design that represents Currituck County schools, and helps to kind of represent the community and the heritage we have here, but also a festive upbeat kind of design. So, we have two designs that we will be sending out to staff members. You've received some this evening, and we will also send those out to some of the community leaders within our county as well. So, we'd like to unveil. Our first design is a lighthouse design, was created by Sarah Locklear from Currituck County High School. She was unable to be here with us this evening, but we will present her with a framed copy of the card in its final design stage. We'll make sure she gets her original back, and we will also be providing her with a $50 gift card just in time for Christmas. So, that'll be something we'll send down to the high school tomorrow. The second card is designed by Ms. Phoebe Leese, and she is a JP Napp Early College student. I believe she's here this evening. She'll come up and join me.
Here she is.
With the change in how we've been designing and printing our cards, it's allowed us to expand from just black and white to be able to add some color, and Phoebe took this to the limit. It is a beautiful sunset sailboat. You can see that's beachside, and I should probably let her describe her inspiration, but you see the horses. So, we've got Corolla. And Hart, that's the way I interpreted it. So, I think she did a great job, and again, beautiful design with the color. So, I'd like to share your card in its entirety. And here's the finished card design, so we were able to put it on a little blue background with a "Happy Holidays for Everyone." So, again, we wanna thank her for a very original design, again, especially since it incorporates so much color. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I get a picture of you? Can I get a picture of my son? There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did an excellent job, Phoebe. Okay, next, Student Board Member Reports. Thomas Poston, Katie Trailer, Rick Loggie, and Alexandra Carter.
Good evening. I'd like to start out with athletics. The first thing I'd like to say is the Currituck Knights Football Team made it all the way to the third round of the state playoffs. So, congratulations to the team for an amazing season, and thank you to the many community members and board members who came out to support the team throughout the season. I don't think I've ever seen the red zone quite so crazy, but great job to the football team. The Currituck County High School's basketball season has finally started. The Lady Knights will take on the Lady Bruins at Camden on Wednesday at six, and they'll play at Edenton on Friday. And the men's basketball team will also play at Camden and Edenton. Their games are at 7:30. So, if you can, head out to these away games to support the Knights. And the wrestling and swim teams have also kicked off their seasons. And I'd also like to mention, thank you to everyone who came to the Currituck County Theater Fall Play last month, the desperate hours. It was a tremendous success, and thank you to everyone who came out to support it. We hope you enjoyed the show. And now, I'll pass it on to Katie Trailer.
Hi, y'all. The CCHS FFA has kicked off their Christmas Food Drive. They'll also be sponsoring two children in the local community for Christmas. The CCHS Members of Student Government is sponsoring Operation Santa Claus once again this year. Members are raising money now to purchase clothing, toys, and other gifts for different children in need in Currituck County. If you'd like to donate to this great cause, you can contact Ms. Teresa Brinkley at CCHS. And the Currituck County Christmas Parade has been rescheduled to this Saturday, December 14th. Come out and enjoy festive fun. CCHS, FFA, and SCA will be represented in the parade, along with many other community members and organizations. And I would also like to say, the CCHS chorus will be at Busch Gardens this Saturday night.
Oh, nice. Great.
This week marks final exams week for college classes at JP Napp, and next week will mark high school examinations. The student government at Napp is collecting food for families in need in the area, and Beta Club at Napp will be volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House in Norfolk over break. On Thursday, November 14th, kindergarten, first and second grade students presented Eagles and Turkeys, a program about how the eagle became the national bird at Jarvisburg Elementary. On Monday, December 2nd, Jarvisburg started their second-of-four school-wide books reading across the school called "The Cricket in Times Square." Also, I'd really like to compliment Thomas on his performance in the theater department. I don't know if, I don't know if anybody didn't get a chance to see it, but it was really good.
Good evening. So, I get to talk about the elementary schools, which is pretty awesome. They're always so happy around this time of year. I think it's just, why can't high school be that way? We don't even have craft time, goodness gracious. Okay, so, this, in the coming weeks, at the elementary schools, there's going to be a lot of Christmas activities, and they'll be enjoying a range of events throughout the county, from Santa pictures and Santa shops to holiday concerts and more, especially since we got a sneak peek of the Moyac Middle School holiday concert, which was amazing. I'd also like to say that the CCMS Band Concert is on the 12th, which I believe is Thursday, at 6:30, and I believe that's at CCMS. Also, for JP Napp, this past weekend, our school, our- since we got a sneak peek of the Moyack Middle School holiday concert, which was amazing. I'd also like to say that the CCMS Band Concert is on the 12th, which I believe is Thursday at 6:30, and I believe that's at CCMS. Also, for JP NAP, this past weekend, our school, our club, FBLA, went with Moyack Middle School and competed at the regional competitions. And we had two first-place winners. Ms. Phoebe Leese placed first in job interview. We're so proud of her. And Ms. Tiffany Porter placed first in public speaking. As a great note, and something I'm very excited to say, I'd like to congratulate Thomas for being a Morehead Kane Scholarship finalist. He is so great, and he is definitely forging ahead, and I just, I'm so happy to know him. I hope you guys have a great night, and thank you.
I want to say thank you, and I'm a semifinalist, not quite a finalist yet, but we can cross our fingers, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, overnight field trip requests. Superintendent Schuler?
Yes, we have two tonight, both from CCHS. A request for SASE to attend an event in Corolla on December 14th and 15th, and also for the wrestling tournament in Newport, North Carolina, the 13th and 14th.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on either of these? Since there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, trips are approved. Okay, next, Read to Achieve Overview and Implementation Plans. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening, once again. Dr. Dobney, members of the board, I'd like to come to you this evening to share with you some information regarding Read to Achieve, which is a legislative mandate, give you an overview of the legislation itself, the different components of it, and let you know what our implementation plans are. This past summer was a very busy legislative session, and there were many, many bills passed. Of them, this was one of them. Once it was passed, we had very little time to, for DPI, to then take the information and put it into workable formats, provide districts with the tools that they need, and the answers to many of the questions that were outlined in the legislation, before then being able to come in and actually implement with some degree of confidence. It's for that reason I stand before you in December, rather than having told you more about this closer to the beginning of the year. We feel a little bit more confident about what we're doing and the answers to questions that obviously come up. Read to Achieve is a component of the Excellent Schools Act, which, some of which you've heard during our discussion during work session today. The act itself, General Statute 115(c)83.1a, includes several components that have impacted us locally and across the state. There have been changes to improve K3 literacy, assigning of school performance grade was included in this legislation, maximizing instructional time, and that was the window of 10 days to five days for testing, adjusting the school calendar start and end dates, strengthening teacher licensure requirements, establishing plans for pay for performance or pay for excellence, and the end of tenure. Again, we talked about that during our break. So it was a jam-packed act. From that act, the focus on early literacy emerges. Within that component of the legislation, it recognizes that early literacy, and literacy in general, is a keystone for academic success, and not just in reading itself, but it opens the doors and the windows and everything else to learning in all content areas. Early development and diagnostic reading tools were incorporated into this. Again, we've been a part of the governor's program and plan for this for the past several years, so this part of it was not new to us. And again, the use of Reading 3D was incorporated into this act, and it was actually approved by the legislature last year. And again, it outlined the requirements of the Read to Achieve initiative. The Read to Achieve initiative itself, that legislation has several components. It outlined a plan for a comprehensive reading plan to be designed by the state and disseminated to the local education agencies, and provides suggestions for how we can increase and improve literacy instruction across all grade levels. Included also is a kindergarten entry assessment, which will take into effect in 2014 and 15. Essentially, this is a screening that'll be done for kindergarteners when they enter. And again, it'll provide us with a baseline for knowing what do they know when they walk in the door, and what do we need to work with them on developing. Very developmental, but it'll be something that'll be standardized across the state. Facilitating early grades reading proficiency, elimination of social promotion, successful reading development for retained students and notification requirements to parents and guardians, those components are specific to Read to Achieve. This slide illustrates that this is not just a third-grade initiative. It's not just a third-grade law. If you're a third-grade teacher, unfortunately, that's where the buck stops. That's when a lot of the checks and balances come into play. But the goal of the Read to Achieve program is to ensure that every student leaves third grade reading at or above grade level. Research says that third grade seems to be that benchmark year. If students are reading on grade level, the chances of them being successful in all of their subjects down the road and through high school are much, much greater. So third grade is that targeted year. But we know that kids start reading as soon as they walk in the classroom doors in kindergarten. They do in Currituck. So we start our instruction, and so this program begins in kindergarten. And as you follow the arrows going across, it identifies that early kindergarten assessment as part of this. We start with the diagnostics using Reading 3D from kindergarten, first, second, third grade, and we take that information and we tailor instruction to try to meet the needs of our students, to fill the voids that they may have in their skills, skill set, and be able to develop good readers. Those students that are not performing or have continued difficulties or are at risk, we immediately begin, well, I won't say immediately, by the end of the first nine weeks, we begin creating a personalized education plan for those students. And again, we in Currituck have done this from kindergarten forever. As long as there've been a PEP, we have started in kindergarten. This is the first year that it's actually implemented and required for implementation beginning in kindergarten. At third grade, those students that may not be on track may get additional assistance, and we may look at a portfolio to, as an alternative means for demonstrating reading proficiency. And then over under fourth grade, you'll see there's several little bubbles that drop down what happens in fourth grade if a student is not deemed proficient by the end of third grade. I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of those other bubbles later on. This flow chart, and I put this out front because this flow chart essentially summarizes what happens in third grade, by the end of third grade. Again, the overall goal is to have students reading at or above grade level by the end of third grade. It's measured by their proficiency scores on EOG testing. EOGs happen at the end of the year. We're going to try to do some things before it gets to the end of the year. But if the EOG score is not, if they are proficient, and you'll see a lot of roads going towards the yes, and that means that they've been, they can be promoted to fourth grade with a proficiency. If you go down the right side, I'm sorry, the left side of the screen, you'll see that if they're not proficient on their EOGs, then there's a next measure, and that's the development or the use of a good cause exemption. And there are several options there. If they get a good cause exemption, they're deemed proficient, and they move on to fourth grade. If they don't demonstrate proficient through a good cause exemption, then they will be, they'll have the opportunity to take a retest of the EOG and/or a, an alternate assessment. It's called the Read to Achieve Assessment. If they're proficient, they move on. If they're not, and this all happens within that last 10-day window, then they will be recommended for attendance at a summer camp, a summer reading camp. During that time, they'll work on reading skills and strengthen their skills, and they'll have the opportunity to take another test or retest, or complete their portfolio. If they're deemed proficient during summer camp or at the end of summer camp, they'll be promoted to fourth grade. On they move. If not, at the end of summer camp, if they're still not proficient, then they will be placed into either a transitional third, fourth classroom, or an accelerated classroom, where they will receive a required 90 minutes of uninterrupted reading instruction, and continue to work through a portfolio assessment. And by November, they will have the opportunity to take a test or demonstrate proficiency and be promoted at mid-year. Long step to get to a definite retention if you haven't made those decisions prior Good cause exemptions is one of the first stops along the way. Students can be exempt from the proficiency requirement if they meet one of these requirements. Some limited English proficient students may be eligible for a good cause exemption, and those would be students that have less than two years of instruction in the ESL program. Students with IEPs, that include alternative, alternate assessments with reading interventions based on extended content standards. That's not every student with an IEP. It's those students that have significant cognitive disabilities and are on an Extend 1 assessment. Students that have been previously retained more than once. Again, our practice in Currituck County has not been retained, not to retain students more than once in an elementary span, and the chances of our students having been retained more than once before they get to third grade is next to zero, unless they've transferred in having been retained already. And again, proficiency on an alternate assessment after the EOG or summer camp, that would be the Read to Achieve Assessment, would qualify them for a good cause exemption or the proficiency through a reading portfolio. We have opted in Currituck for all of our students to participate in the practice with a purpose that could contribute to the portfolio development, and here's why. Beginning in January, when we come back from Christmas, the state has developed a series and a collection of EOG-like reading passages with questions. They are aligned to standards that they're already teaching, and those standards will then be tested on the EOG. We are encouraging, and we've asked all of our teachers to develop these portfolios and allow our students to practice these passages because we feel like it will help them to be prepared for the end-of-grade test. Plus, if during that time when they are working through the passages, if they can, if they can read through and demonstrate proficiency, which is measured at 80%, four out of five questions per passage, three passages per standard, then they're also creating that backup good cause exemption that will allow students, if for some reason they have a bad day on that one test at the end of grade, then they'll have a portfolio developed and will be able to say, we've got a backup. Okay? We feel like this is going to give them the opportunity to be able to demonstrate proficiency and practice for that EOG. If the portfolio is not completed, and we're not, we're not going to push kids to complete the portfolio if they're not ready. If we know they're not ready, and they're not demonstrating, they're not successful on those passages, then, you know, we're going to continue instruction. But the portfolio can extend into the summer reading camp and can be developed and completed during summer. If it's not completed there, it can be completed during that third, fourth transition time. So it's always going to be a part of that. The component of Read to Achieve with the successful reading development for students that don't demonstrate proficiency, as I've mentioned earlier, the summer reading camp, it'll be six to eight weeks. It's required to be at least six weeks, and it must be at least three hours per day. This will be an option for parents. Parents have the final say in whether or not their child attends summer camp. If parents choose not to have their student attend summer camp, then the student will be retained. If they choose, and there are going to be family circumstances, that custody, for one example, we can work within the state of North Carolina. If a custody agreement requires that the student stay with a parent in Charlotte, we can contact Charlotte and see if we can't get them into a summer reading camp there because they're going to be held across the state. If parent chooses and they're going out of state, they can choose to have their student tutored, Sylvan Learning, some other tutoring service, at their own expense, and then we will test them on that alternate assessment, Read to Achieve Assessment, at the end of summer camp here in North Carolina, but they have to be here for the day of the test. So there's some options there, and you may hear about that as we come along and as parents become more aware of it. The 3-4 transition or accelerated class is another strategy for helping those students that haven't demonstrated proficiency by the end of third grade, and of course, in the mid-year promotion, as I mentioned. So what are we doing here in Currituck? Well, we've administered the BOG III, which is the beginning of grade three exam. That is to serve as a baseline. We have begun communication with staff. We've met with them regarding the guidelines for portfolio development and what's required for the legislation as a whole. And I've met specifically with third-grade teachers to talk with them about how it might impact and how we might use that portfolio passage to help them replace what they would have normally used to help prepare kids for the end-of-grade tests. I will say Susan Camden has also helped me with this. She's our literacy expert that goes out and works with the Reading 3D, and she's been critical in helping to roll this out with me. We've begun communicating with parents. Letters have been sent home at the beginning of the year about the BOG, the beginning of grade three assessment. We've sent recently, when we got the results, we again reminded them of how that all plays into the Read to Achieve and the requirements there. And we've begun parent informational meetings. We met last week. We have another meeting, I believe, on the 12th at Charboro and at Jarvisburg. So we're trying to be able to share this information with parents as it's relative and relevant to the results that they're just now receiving. We've also focused a great deal on our training with Reading Foundations. Again, Susan Camden is our Reading Foundations trainer, and we have focused on third grades, second and third grade teachers through a five-day intensive reading training, and it really gets to the heart of the reading methods and what kind of research-based practices we should be putting into our classroom instruction. So that just ended last Friday, and we'll start another group of teachers coming through in January and February. And then finally, we'll be continuing to monitor student progress and beginning to make the plans for the summer reading camps that will be required to have. At this point, I've told you all that I know, probably more than I know, and I apologize for the amount of detail, but it's a very comprehensive and complex initiative that's been spelled out in legislation, and we did want to make sure you were aware of it and had an opportunity to ask questions.
Any questions? Great, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nobody signed up for the public comment session, so we'll skip over that. Information items. January work session will be on January 13th, 2014, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 5:00. And the at 5:00, and the January board meeting will be on January 13th, 2014, right here at the Historic Courthouse at 7:00. Okay, next, board member comments. We'll start with Ms. Craft.
Okay. I visited Moyack Middle School last week. Everyone was working hard and everything, the kids were working hard, teachers were working hard. I enjoyed the visit. I visited with Charboro Elementary a few weeks ago, same thing, busy, teachers busy, kids actively engaged. The Knights football team, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, have been asked to be the marshals for the parade this Saturday, so they're going to lead off the parade, so that's exciting. And I just want to say that we're so fortunate to have such great staff and students here in Currituck. I just don't think we, I mean, I just, I'm so grateful that everyone worked so hard to make it successful, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I want you to have a wonderful and safe holiday.
Great. Ms. Gaddis?
A lot of the things I was going to talk about tonight got picked up by the student board members we have, which is great. They're taking a lot of the stuff we come in to talk about. FBLA, for example, I was going to talk about Mike Midland, JP NAP's, FBLA teams, the football, the play. Everybody's doing a great job. To piggyback a little bit off of what Ms. Craft said, our staff is something that we really rely on here in our schools, and I just wanted to point out, I learned of something that, we always talk about what our staff does for our kids, but I do want the Currituck County to know that our staff does go above and beyond just for our kids. Knott Island Elementary School staff actually spent the last few months collecting items for Marines that were overseas, and they actually packed up 80 pounds of Christmas gifts and items and things for Marines a few weeks ago to get it there in time for Christmas. And I just want to say, during this holiday time, it's a time to remember those people that aren't necessarily just in your family, but those in your community, and those people that are doing things for you behind the scenes. So y'all have a great holiday.
Ms. Sethridge?
Yes, I would just like to thank our student board members. I'm just so proud of all of you, and I didn't know I was sitting by a celebrity.[1605.35][1605.35](LAUGHTER). Congratulations. I mean, you're doing great things, and we are so proud of you and put Currituck on the map (LAUGHTER) in the future. Try to go out to as many functions and holiday concerts, band concerts, chorus concerts. Gosh, if you look at the calendar, it's packed full. I mean, every night, there's something, so you kind of have to pick and choose what you want to go to, but get out and enjoy Christmas. Enjoy this special time of year, and be safe. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
First off, I'd like to, one more time, thank John Wheeler and our football team assistant coaches. It's one of the few times that I've had people come up to me in the stands and say, we need a bigger stadium.[1657.38][1657.38](LAUGHTER). I mean, I've been to Currituck games where there were 50 fans, and this past year, you saw there were people up and down the fence standing because there wasn't enough room in the stands for all the people we had coming out to see our football team. Next, Thanksgiving dinner. The Thanksgiving dinner that was put on at the high school was a great success. Lots of people came in, good food. It was really nice to see our high school kids and middle school kids volunteering their time serving food. Next, celebration of education. I want to thank Ms. Rose. Ms. Rose did a really good job using her time to get people there to speak. I just want to thank you again for what you did for our teachers and our county. Buddy White put on another great play. Thomas was fantastic, but Buddy White has been there a long time, and I can't even name how many plays he's put on, and they're all success. Last, I got an invitation last week to do something I haven't done in the last five or six years. Selena Jarvis asked me to go in and teach her class. I didn't realize how much I missed it, but I'm not going back teaching again.[1729.51][1729.51](LAUGHTER). Great bunch of students. I really enjoyed being in there. They asked some tough questions. They asked questions about financing for our school system. They wanted to know how our budget worked. They wanted to know where the money came from to run a school system and how our school system ran. It was a good bunch of kids. I really enjoyed it. And last but not least, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Next time we'll be here will be after Christmas, and just thank all of our employees for being Currituck employees.
I would just like to say, I have a daughter that's in the Air Force. She is going to be able this year to spend time with her family, but there are many military members that will not be able to spend this holiday season with their families, so please keep them in mind, knowing that they're overseas trying to protect our rights to have a good holiday. And with that, I'd like to, you know, wish everybody a safe, happy holiday season. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.